That's that one. And then, under "New Business," we'll need to add a "B." Our charter requires that if I'm not going to be at a city council meeting, that you appoint a manager pro tem. And so, I'm going to be missing my first city council meeting in however many years I've been here because I will be on vacation. This is the only time that Shannon can be on vacation because she's a teacher. So, I'm going to miss the first meeting in April. So, our charter requires that you appoint someone. Yes, Ms. Cho, I've already told her a month ago that she's going to be sitting in that seat. And I have some language that we're going to print out. We'll put it in the form of a motion so that someone can... They said they had emails and phone calls. Okay, alright, alright, that's fine. But if they don't respond, it's complicit, right? Then they agree. We're going to print it out here pretty soon. We'll make it, uh, we'll make it easy. Thanks. That's it, thank you.
So, council, any questions on the item?
The mayor did have some, a question or two in email, which I've printed out some information.
Yeah, there's everybody doesn't have it.
So, if you want to go over your question and provide that information to council, then Ms. Roedacher won't have to stick around for the entire meeting if she doesn't have... Oh, you have to. Oh, Mr. Catcall, I'm sorry. If there's, if nobody intends to pull up from consent...
Well, the question I'd asked is that a couple of the affordable housing units that have received tax abatements over time...
Everybody's mics lit up?
Did not list a amount under Item D where it asks, "How much will this benefit each rental unit?" And they were blank. And so, I asked about it, and it's apparently a very complex question. The gross answer is if you take the amount of tax abatement and you divide it by the number of units in the complex, then theoretically you might have somewhere close. But a more complicated answer is that it varies depending on other funding sources and the programs under which those other funding sources operate, and a very complex interaction of those things. So, it's hard to say. One of them, we haven't heard back from them. The other one, you know, apologized for having glossed over it and, you know, is kind of guesstimating somewhere in the $40 a unit on Rain Garden. I think it's reasonable to ask them. It's kind of late in the game probably to be insistent, you know, about having the application filled out in that much detail. But I would hope we kind of push them to try to stay current with us on that. All of these rental complexes have been beneficiaries of tax abatement, and the numbers are in the staff report. The, I don't have it, it's here somewhere. I don't know if I have it right in front of me or not. The amount that Wilsonville is foregoing in the aggregate is about 72,700. They're also getting abatements from the county, which added to Wilsonville, 72,000 brings it up to somewhere around $274,000 in the aggregate also. In these times when we have such major difficulties with housing being available to everyone at prices they can afford, excuse me, I certainly think that it's the very modest level of subsidy by the city, and it continues programs that we've had in place for some years. I don't have any real questions at this point. I appreciate staff following up a little bit on that. Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor West?
I think that's a super, I mean, I didn't think it's a great question you asked. And I guess my question would be to add on to that is, and probably why you asked it, was to make sure that these benefits are being passed on to the renter or on to the resident, and that they're receiving the benefit of it directly as much as absolutely possible, and it's not going into someone else's pocket. And are we assured that this subsidy from the city is really getting to who we want it to get to, to help them make sure their housing is more affordable?
Short answer is yes.
The short answer is yes. The longer answer is it's a complex calculation to assign values to those different things. And in some way, you know, as you've probably observed, there's ranges everywhere from $140, $150 per unit per month to $40-ish, you know, on the other end of the extreme. But they essentially are all passing through benefit to the extent that they can within the other program. So, I'm convinced that the answer is yes.
So, just a quick add on to that. Was it last year or the year before? Former council president Starr had been concerned about it, and so, we actually arranged tours, go to all of the facilities. And Counselor Starr went to all the facilities, and I believe Counselor Lehan went to them too. And after that, he felt very good about what they were all doing with the funds. And so, I know he was concerned...
So, we did, that's a more intensive sort of review than we've done for several years. But I think that, I mean, Counselor Lehan, maybe you could tell us how you felt coming out of that.
Out of the, sorry, I was...
The site visits on the, on the tax abatement?
Yeah, those site visits. I thought they were excellent. I thought Counselor Starr and I were on most of them together. And, you know, we met with the residents as well as the managers of those facilities and toured the, toured individual units as well as the group areas. You know, Vilbo has a wide range of supportive housing, from great deal of support to minimal support, depending on the needs of the clients. So, but all the ones we toured were, I was very impressed with. And the, and most importantly, the residents were enthusiastic about how much they enjoyed living there, enjoyed their situation there, and could come and go on transit and get to their jobs or their, or whatever they were, needed to get to, so...
My recollection was that Counselor Starr was concerned about the level of upkeep and maintenance, and that he came away being very impressed with that.
Well, well managed, yeah. Well, it's a complex question because there are different ownership entities and different management entities. It's not like one group is doing all of these. It's this whole bunch of different people involved, so. Counselor Stevens?
So, one of the experiences I had when I first came on council was I went on ride-alongs with our meals delivery program for people. And, and those are the places you visit. And so, you really just get to have a conversation with a lot of those residents. That's very informal, really casual, but I think you really get a sense of the need on a way that's, you know, not we're touring, we're inspecting or anything, but it's just, you know, here's a program. And the volunteers who I rode with were just great, these two women who give their time, you know, during the week to make these deliveries. So, if anybody is interested in doing that, I know they do, you can do ride-alongs with those, the meals delivery program that the community center does. And it's, it's quite an eye-opening experience.
I'm sure it is.
It really is, yeah.
Who was the former manager of Lambs?
Oh, St...
He was very involved. I think he ended up moving to Ban.
Is it Staffsley?
I know who you're talking about.
Couple of ride-alongs with him.
Yeah, did you?
And some of the, some of the lunches go all the way out to, all the way out to rural parts of...
Out to the county, yeah. Yeah, they do. We go out on Graham's Ferry Road. There was one that went down this dirt, muddy road.
Yeah.
Out to this trailer, yeah. But a lot of them, most of them are concentrated on that, in that area.
Went over to the Nickerson's.
Pardon me?
One of the ride-alongs, I went over to the Nickerson's.
The Nickerson's, yeah.
On the other side of Graham's Ferry. That's a scary place.
Advanced road down there.
Alright, so, let's not just get into telling stories here. Let's, let's try to pay attention to what we're doing.
I just have flashback.
So, there's about three, what's the report, staff report says 366 rental units amongst the five complexes that are, that benefit from the subating program in Wilsonville. So, it's, it's a few, but it's, it's important, I think, to those people that are residing in those facilities. So, any other question about that or about any of the other agenda or...
Consent?
Consent items?
Property taxes and minutes.
If not...
Oh, and the Stafford Road, isn't it?
Stafford Road, yeah. And Mr. Adams is going to come and present on that.
Yeah, we've got that. So, are you ready for that?
Well, we did do council concerns.
Do you have other concerns? Yes.
Yeah, in the other department.
Please, Counselor Lehan.
So, I have been, over a period of time, getting letters from constituents. I don't know if anyone else has on the plastic bag issue.
I have not yet.
But more and more cities are banning plastic bags, grocery pack, plastic bags. And Eugene did, and they sent me a copy of the Eugene ordinance and another ordinance. And I know just from reading the paper, you see a lot more articles now about the disappearance of the recycling markets. So, I don't know if it's reasonable to have another conversation with Republic about where their secondary markets are. You know, it was all kind of up in the air the last time we met with them.
Mayor, and I just...
Yeah, the complexity, you know, is that there, number one is the question of how much energy does it use to produce a plastic bag versus a paper bag? And the other is what happens to the plastic bags after they've been produced and used? And then, where do they go? And the, one of the major cost factors, as I understand it, has been the extent to which the plastic bags clog up the paper, recycled paper grinding machinery. And they have to stop the machinery and manually clean all the plastic bags out of the thing on fairly short intervals, like every hour or two in some cases, you know, because there's so much contamination in the paper. And so, that kind of problem is part of what has led to the collapse of some of the paper recycling markets. So, that's an entirely different question than about how much energy does it take to produce the product originally. So, you've got a pretty complex question when you start digging into it.
It seems like something we should stay on top of, because I think from the consumer side, the consumers are ready to go there. Costco has not done bags in years and years and years, and no one expects to get bags at Costco. Everybody takes a bag or, or else you put it in your cart.
Cardboard boxes, they do provide.
And they'll, they'll provide you cardboard boxes if you want them, but most people don't take them.
Right.
They just put them in the, because then they got to recycle them. So, they just put them in the cart, take them out, and put them in their trunk. But I know my sister, who is our household shopper, she's always got cloth bags and other bags in her car because that's what she takes to put little stuff in.
Right.
Otherwise, it just goes in the cart, and you go right back out to the car. And I, and, and the way the Eugene one works, it's, they don't, they've banned plastic bags, but the grocery stores can do paper bags for a nickel. So, if you find yourself there without a bag and you're desperately in need of a bag because you bought a whole bunch of tiny things, for a nickel, you can get a paper bag.
I have an update on this if you want.
Well, I wondered about, the other thing, is there any activity at the state level in this legislature?
Yes, that's why we haven't brought anything to councils, because there's a discussion of a state preemptor much along the lines of Washington has done. So, if the state's going to preempt, there's no need for us to go in that direction. But we have everything we need. We have other model ordinances.
Yeah.
We have staff reports. So, we're ready to come back to council. If it does, if it fails and you want to move on the local level, we can do that. We just want to do some outreach to business community.
So, we ought to know within, what, a couple of months at the state level?
When Signe die, you tell me.
Isn't it June?
June.
Isn't it, they have to come out of committee by the end of April or the bill dies?
Yeah, there's a point at which if it doesn't come out, it's dead in committee.
It's the end of April right now.
So, let me follow up on that. We'll get you an answer when it's out.
Yeah, yeah, let's kind of understand the timetable. So, we, you know, I agree, we need to keep on top of it. But I think keeping you on top of the state stuff is part of it, you know.
We did have a gal that...
Well, that's a reasonable response, because like I said, I'm getting constituents now multiple times are coming at me about this.
We've had one lady that's come into council twice, I believe. And we are communicating directly with her to tell her where we're at with it, so...
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
And I wish I could remember the name of the third grader, who's now a fifth or sixth grader who originally wrote me about this.
We still have the letter, but they never left the name and phone number. They just said, "Mrs. so-and-so's classroom," Mrs. so-and-so's on summer vacation.
Alright, let's do that for follow-up. Anything else for council concerns?
Okay, I still have some more ones.
Alright, let's go.
The other one was blowers. I've, I have a letter here about blowers.
Blowers?
Leaf blowers.
Oh, leaf blowers.
Like banning?
Huh? No, but encouraging people to use electric leaf blowers. But that if you are using a blower, you should be wear, a gas blower, you should be wearing respiratory protection and certainly ear protection. And, and she's saying that our parks workers are not doing that.
Oh, she's talking about our maintenance workers?
Yeah. So, I don't know about that.
That would surprise me.
Well, we could find out.
We could find out. I, I know that they're required to wear hearing and eye protection to use leaf blowers.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Oh, they're, they're, she was concerned also that the, the, you should be on a, because of the fumes and the stuff that you blow up...
Yeah.
That you should have a respirator of some sort. Now, I don't know, I don't know what the ASHTO standards are on this kind of thing, but...
Our HR department can tell you.
Not ASHTO, but...
But I will tell you this, we do often get confused, our employees get confused with some of the...
Other landscape people.
Free laborers that come in through Clackamas County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm just saying...
We do contract with them to do landscape media and stuff, so...
Alright, so maybe we can have a little round robin, bring that back to us and see where we're at if we could.
And then, my last thing, yeah.
Do you want to come up and address this, since it's your employees? Well, it'd probably be, it would probably be parks and public works. Okay, alright. We do require them to wear hearing and eye protection.
They do, wear hearing protection, but not necessarily requirement of the respirators unless they...
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't think that's an OSHA requirement.
OSHA, that's what I mean, not ASHTO, but OSHA.
Okay, we'll get more information.
What else?
And the other one I just wanted to fall, to follow up on is about Brown Road. I, I know that's somewhere, or what's the deal with the Brown Road utilities and other improvements on Brown Road? Do we have a plan on that?
Steve Adams is going to be up here in a second, or Zach. Do you guys have any updates on Brown Road?
Brown Road, between, sorry.
Between Wilsonville Road and...
For the record, you are?
Zach Weigl, Capital Projects Engineering Manager.
Thank you.
So, Brown Road, well, it's in the five-year capital plan. The proposal is for not next year, but the following year, that it would start design.
Okay, and that, and that would include both undergrounding of those utility poles and sidewalks on the, on the east side?
That's correct, yeah.
So, design, two years from now, construction, three years from now, probably?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any answer for people?
Anything else, council concerns? Alright, if not, why don't we now jump into the scheduled items, starting with Mr. Adams? Stafford Road and Frog Pond Meadows.
Yes. I am Steve Adams, Development Engineering Manager for the city of Wilsonville. The first topic that's on consent agenda tonight is, how did I get there? Boom, that one. Is Frog Pond, with Frog Pond, we always envisioned that Stafford Road would be absorbed into a, as a city street as development occurred. So, this, this isn't the full subdivision, this is just a part that's adjacent to Stafford Road. This is called Frog Pond Meadows. It has been approved by DRB, has passed the council approval period, our call-up period, I should say. And plans were submitted last week for the construction of this area. And with it, we need about 819 additional feet of Stafford Road to transfer from Clackamas County to the city of Wilsonville. It's a formality. We do this every few years, it seems like. We need a little more road as the city grows. The lower part of Stafford, 468 feet here, this was transferred two years ago with Meriding Creek Middle School Project, when we upgraded the intersection here, which is now a signalized intersection. So, we're extending it further up. And this just makes it easier in working with West Hills Development and creating their access. Otherwise, they'd have to get a permit from Clackamas County to build this road off, off of it this immediate summer. This area here, lots 2730 going down to this area, this is anticipated to be the parking area for Street of Dreams, and they're looking to bring two driveways in off of Stafford for Street of Dreams. So, again, it just makes it easier for them to work with the permits from the city rather than from the county. I've been in touch with county staff off and on since last November. They're well aware of this. They know it's coming. They've seen an example, the draft resolution. They've seen this exhibit. They've seen the annexation that Kim Rabel brought to council two weeks ago, and it's been approved at, on first reading. And once, once this gets approved, hopefully by consent agenda tonight, Clackamas County will, in about 30 days, will take it to the county commissioners for approval of transfer of road authority to us.
Does that 819 feet take us to the northern boundary of Frog Pond, or is there still more?
There's still more.
Okay.
This takes us to this, the northern boundary of this subdivision. Beyond this, Frog Pond Lane's another 450 feet north, and another 400 feet north of Frog Pond Lane is Kaylee Road. And that's the extent. So, about, after this, we'll have 850, 870 more feet to take in.
Alright.
Colly.
Pardon me?
Questions?
Colly.
Colly, Kaylee, sorry. No one seems to know how to pronounce it. Everyone I've talked to confirms it different ways. Colly Road.
Alright.
Alright, very good.
That's good, yeah.
Done with that? I've also been asked to provide an update on where we're at with Fifth to Kinsman Project. We received 100% plans on January 31st, and we're working our way through those, trying to get comments back to OTAC. This is the overall layout of the project right now. There's been some modifications done from the 90% plans, primarily, a lot of these at request of Wilsonville Concrete Products, and just kind of looking at the projects and how we're going to go forward with it. We are currently working with acquisitions. We have two different companies, Epic and Herman, HP, RP Herman out of Salem. So, we do, there are two different companies looking at acquisitions of the area. We've gotten the first look of the appraisals just last week. I will be sharing them with our city attorney, Barbara, and we'll be looking at them and seeing what the numbers are like. And upon our approval, we'll go out with offer letters to the various owners. We don't have them all in. We just have probably a third to half of the appraisals in right now. We hope to get the rest of them in, I would imagine, this week or next week. We're looking to go out to pre-qualify contractors. There'll be an ad in this week's DJC on Wednesday and Friday to get contractors to pre-qual. Also, it gets the word out on the street that we have this upwards of $10 million project coming down, so they'll be aware of it when it does go out to bid. We envision the project taking over two construction seasons, so we're looking at at least 16 months right now to get this built. And one of the points that's kind of slowed us down a little bit is the federal permitting. So, both Army Corps of Engineers and National Marine Fisheries Service needs to approve the in-water work period for the bridge here on Fifth Street and the bridge here on Kinsman. And government shutdown slowed permitting review down a little bit. I did get an email last week from Army Corps asking for some more information, which is good. That means they're looking at our permit. We're not sitting in some paper stack somewhere. We'll be providing them with our responses. And I've also asked our consultant to check with the Corps, the people he knows at the Corps of Engineers and at National Marine Fisheries to request a review and approval by June. The in-water work period goes from July 15th to October 15th. So, that's the critical time. We need to get into the creek bed and build the footings for the bridges. And the plan is, again, to build one bridge this year. This bridge is needed first. It carries a redirected sanitary sewer main. Once this bridge in sanitary sewer, which goes from this intersection, it follows this road, follows Kinsman, and follows this easement here, ties into the existing 15-inch sanitary sewer main here. Once we get this section live and in operation, we can then build this footing. As this footing completely crushes and takes out that sewer pipe. And so, it's going to be a two-stage progression. That's why we envision two summers doing it. Build one bridge this summer, and then build the rest of the infrastructure around it, and come back in next summer and build the second bridge.
So, you are planning on moving dirt this year still?
Plan is still. I got money this year to, in this year's budget, to purchase land, and I have several million, billion in next year's budget, proposed budget, to start construction.
Okay, well, I'm personally glad to hear you're moving on this. I had some concern because the original notifications from your contractors were last October, and the amount of movement since then has been glacial.
It's been a lot of, a lot of paper stuff, a lot of reviewing, yes. We haven't had a lot of contact with people out there, but things are starting to come together right now.
Council questions? Counselor Stevens?
A quick reminder, I remember, God, it's going to be about two years now. We talked quite extensively about the Bike Path Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you remember that?
Yes.
So, just remind me what that all was. It's been so long.
Let me zoom in a little bit here in this south area. So, what we did down here where Kinsman, the wide path here is the Tonquin Trail. It's 16 feet wide, bike path connecting the, the Maury's neighborhood to Boon's Ferry Road. And when it came to this area right here, right about this area, there's a 23-inch white oak that, the original early plans were showing it being cut down, and this also is a wooded area where a small seasonal creek flows. And so, we, I said, we talked about it, and we went for the redesign. We moved the bike path to this side of the tree. You see the north one comes off right after the tree. We moved to this side. And this little thing here is a little short barrier to hold the road embankment up, so the tree doesn't get, the tree roots don't get impacted. And this stretch of road, pathway here is a boardwalk. It's actually going to be an elevated boardwalk, so we do not impact the tree roots, and this will be left as kind of a wooded, pleasant area on your, on your path.
Thanks, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah, we incorporated that.
Other questions?
Can you go on down to Boon's Ferry?
Oh, Boon's Ferry? This way, sure. And for those who aren't familiar, or perhaps have forgotten, this area, on this corner, we're going to do our first elevated intersection. So, it actually ramps up, so the crown of the intersection is six inches higher than the street. So, it's basically at top of curb. It'll become a four-way stop. There's a lot, a large concern here by the neighborhood on safety. And so, by putting in a platform intersection here, it forces cars to slow. It makes it a safer crossing and more pleasant look. And that'll be our first one in the city. We do have others planned for the Frog Pond neighborhood. We have at least two planned for up there. So, again, it's a way of making a safer intersection and getting cars to slow down in a pedestrian environment.
And, and what's the status on Paul's building there?
Paul's building? We're leaving it as untouched as we can. So, we've been, a lot of contact with Paul Missile. If you're not familiar with him, he's owned this building for a number of years now. And this is the right-of-way line. You can see clearly the building extends about six feet into the right-of-way. And we did not, this is an awning, actually, the building footing extends in the right-of-way too. Under direction from council, we, we worked the design around Paul's building, so it is still there. All the work in front does not impact his awning or anything. We're doing a, a special type of sidewalk here, rather than just a gray concrete. There's going to be a stamped wooden look, so it'll be a brown concrete with kind of a board banner stamped on top, so it looks a little more like a 1930s, 1940s, more of a rustic boardwalk type thing out, but it will be concrete. We squeezed everything down as best we could to get the bike lane and two travel lanes in here, so it is really tight. As soon as you go past this building, you can see where the sidewalk comes back out again to where we would normally be, and it stays on this area location going north.
And, and is this pretty much what Paul would like to do also?
Yes. Paul's approved this design. He's, he's fine with it. We've given him... We've given him a couple of parallel parking spots out front. The side of his building right here, there's a stormwater swale here, but the rest of this, we're going to add gravel, a gravel area to the side of the paved street, so he can gain some parallel parking for his friends and tenants there. And he is fine with this design. We've talked to him several times.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Next up, I think, is PGE Streetlight Pilot Program. Ms. Kerber, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. It's Delora Kerber, Public Works Director. So here to give you an update on our working with Puget Sound, Puget Sound, wrong one, Portland General Electric, on a LED slash water meter pilot program. And what we're looking at is, as part of any conversion to LED, the new, one of the options that you can have is to have a controller on top. So most LED streetlights that go in have just a blank note on top, but we have been asking questions about what is the value or the functionality of having a controller on top of our streetlights. We have also in parallel been looking into the automatic meter reading or automatic meter infrastructure, AMI, AMR, are two acronyms, for our water meters. And so we had an opportunity to meet with PGE to find out that they are doing a pilot project they'd like us to be involved with for their streetlights. And we said, that'd be great. Could we also do our water meters? And conveniently, or just kind of happenstance, that for this particular pilot project, they were going to be working with Senses as the network provider. And Senses is the same company that does our water meters. So they said that they were intrigued, and so now we're going to be rolling out this pilot project of we will find 15 locations in the city, some of our more challenging locations for the water meters. And then we will be looking up to 50 streetlights that we'll install likely around town center loop that we will, for both of them, put in controllers. One of the advantage of controllers for streetlights have to do with the ability to do diagnostics on the lights. Are they working or are they not? Also, you're able to dim if you so desire. And then also, we're looking into functionality of being able to do traffic counts by metadata, basically being able for them to track how many cars are going by any particular intersection. So we are work-
Part of the smart cities.
Smart city, yes. Part of the smart city. And so we are working on that. The next step that we're going to reconvene, we all had our little tasks to do, that we're collecting information and coming back, and our next step is to develop a communication plan, so that the public knows what we're doing, especially as we swap out the streetlights around the town center loop. So now-
Want to talk about schedule? Schedule A, Schedule B?
Yes, yes. So that was one track we were working on with a group at PGE. And then just this morning, we had an opportunity to meet with some of the same players, but a few different, in that they, PGE, is going to the Public Utilities Commission in April and presenting to them a new tariff schedule for lights. Now, they have this Schedule 95 for LED lights, which are basically Option A, which is they own and maintain, or Option C, which we own and maintain. We currently, with all our high-pressure sodiums in the city, we have, the majority of them are Option B, where we own the lights, the poles and lights, and they maintain on our behalf. When we were talking with PGE many years ago, the only options that they proposed were either A, they take them all over, or we keep them all. They have gotten feedback from us, as well as other municipalities, saying that, you know, we really would like an Option B for LED lights. And they have finally come to the same conclusion, maybe that's a good thing to offer. So we met with them today, and they shared with us some of their proposals. We haven't had a chance to run through the numbers, but what's kind of exciting is that not only will they consider Option B for LED lights, they will also be open to having a mix and match. So we could do some As and some Bs, some Cs, all of those. Previously, it was all or nothing for LED conversion. So, and then we also have been talking to them about small cell facilities, which are a concern if you were to put a small cell onto a streetlight, will they take them or not? And they said they will do an A, and they'll do a C for a small cell streetlight, but they won't do a B. But we could have a whole row of Option Bs, where we own and they maintain, and we could have the one with the small cell facility on it, where they own and maintain. So giving us a lot of flexibility of being able to move forward. So with that, we also are having discussions about how it's getting less and less, the vendors are not providing as much of the high-pressure sodium lights. So when a light burns out, PGE's philosophy will be to start replacing those with LEDs where possible. And so that will be part of our communication plan and tangent with this pilot project, is to let the public know that as we are starting this conversion over to LED lights, that it would not be unheard of in your neighborhood, that we have all these high-pressure sodiums, and then there's one LED light that pops up as we're trying to convert over, just so they're not surprised. And it was interesting when we were looking at information, some of the things also we want to make sure that the public are aware, is being dark sky compliant and having LEDs. There will be a bit of an aesthetic change when it comes to acorns and/or Town and Countries. You can't have a true dark sky compliant acorn or Town and Country because of the glass. The glass will tend to throw out light outwards, and that's one big no-no for dark skies. So what they have done is they're looking at glassless acorns and glassless Town and Countries. Town and Countries are like the, it's a shape like this and glass on all sides. So it basically looks the same, just no glass. The same with the acorn. You have the supports that come up to the cap, but there's just no glass. And they were just sharing with us, the city of Milwaukee, though, they first said, yes, let's put glass in. They realized that that was just throwing a light every which way, which was not really meeting their goals. So that's something that we'll want to be bringing as part of a communication plan to the public, is to give them a lookbook, so that they can see, this is what it looks like now, and this is what it'll look like aesthetically different, and just make sure everybody's all on the same page. So we'll know more after we actually sit down with the proposal numbers that they provided to us, to determine what makes the most sense for our lights. There we go.
Counsel, questions? Counselor Agnew.
So you mentioned about the small cell-
Mm-hmm.
-attachments on the lights. As that kind of continues to unfold, does that mean we would need to change anything in the code that we put in place as far as the requirements for small cell facilities on public?
As long as it met the standards and the guidelines.
You know what I mean?
There's already some language in there, but that's still an evolving situation. In fact, we're meeting with some pole manufacturers this week. We're having kind of a symposium forum here-
Okay.
...that we're hosting for several cities to talk about what all the options would be. And PGE's been very involved in that-
Yes.
...because they're concerned about weight and damage to their poles from some of this equipment.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, so we're having quite a large meeting here this week, I think.
And especially with, if, say, for a small cell facility, we go with Option A, and they own and maintain?
Yeah.
They're very interested in making sure, they will go with whatever standard we want. And so if we have a modified pole to accommodate that, they want to just make sure that they can, you know, maintain it appropriately.
Did Portland just declare some kind of a moratorium on 5G or small cells for health effects?
They did. Yes, they did.
So they could study the health effects? I don't know why they-
It'll just end up in court with the rest of the stuff.
Counselor West?
Just for my own, I'm sure that people may have these same questions. Can you define what dark sky means? I've never heard that term with streetlights before. And then I'm having a hard time picturing, and maybe this will come out, like you said, when they say aesthetics, like no glass? Is it just like a light bulb with no glass?
So if you can envision what an acorn looks like-
Yeah.
-and they have a cap on top-
Yeah.
The LED lights would be up in this cap?
Directed downward.
Directed downward.
Instead of going out.
Right.
Okay.
But once you put the glass on, the glass will defrap the light.
Right. How do you have an acorn with no glass?
It's got legs that mimic the shape of an acorn, so it's got like four bands around what would be the glass, if there was glass there, but it isn't there.
Same with the Town and Country.
Perfect description, yes.
And dark skies, the light's directed downward, not out.
Okay.
They have a bug rating, and it's backlighting, uplighting, and I can't remember what the G stands for, but basically, the intent is it only goes down where you need it-
Ground directed.
-and doesn't get kicked out.
And just for information purposes, what's the benefit over LED over the current system that we're using?
Energy, cost savings.
Yes. Significantly different, less costs, or less-
Way more efficient.
Electricity, yes.
Are they, do they last a long time?
They do. They will, whereas right now, we have a relamping program, probably every five years. A LED light could go anywhere from 10, 15, even up to 20 years.
All those Villebleau ones that have the flat bottoms?
Yeah.
Those are all dark sky, because there is no light coming out around, it's all going down.
Correct.
So Wilsonville adopted a dark skies requirement, and the whole bunch of standards in our code, what, six, eight years ago? Been a while.
And I always love how we can see our stars, and we're still in this city.
That's the plan.
I love it, yeah.
So a couple of points. I'm not sure if everyone on counsel would be aware, but at some point, the Wilsonville City Council made a commitment that we would purchase all of our poles.
Correct.
And we felt like the long-run value to the city was in owning the poles, not in renting them from PGE. And so we spent a considerable amount of money, and we achieved that, and the city owned all of our poles. So that makes me sensitive to anything about them saying, well, we'll just take them over for you.
That's why we've never said yes to that.
Exactly. Now, what's kind of interesting, previously with Option A, they had proposed it would be they'd buy back the poles, and it would be their pole and their light. Now they're saying, well, we'd be open to only the lights, you get to keep the poles. So, again, they're throwing out all this information that we need to analyze, does it make sense or not?
The poles don't tend to go bad unless they're struck by a motorist.
Right, right, yeah.
So we're going to run the numbers and see if that makes any sense to us at all.
Okay. So the other question was, more recently, what, a year ago or so, we embarked on what I understood would be a scheduled LED conversion program, where a certain number of poles or a certain parts of town would be converted. I'm not clear what has happened to that schedule and that program, and how that relates to what you're talking about now.
So that program is on hold while we do this pilot project, so we can determine whether or not it is worthwhile for us to pursue controls. Because if you want to put controls onto the lights, it adds another layer to it. We could convert all the lights without controls and then go back at a later date and retrofit all of them to take on the controls? So that's kind of where we are.
Sometimes it pays to procrastinate.
Well, I'm not sure I'm totally convinced of that, and I'll tell my story. You know, I'm giving my 10th State of the Union, State of the Union, State of the City address tonight.
Congratulations.
Shortly after my very first one, a decade ago, we had discussion about LED light conversion. And we had a meeting, and I believe you were involved in, when PGE was going to do a pilot, and we were going to start on getting this done. And it has been a decade of deferrals and delays, and, you know, you could argue the technology's still changing, but if we wait for there to be no further changes in technology, we'll all be dead, because, you know, technology keeps changing. And so you've got to jump in at some point. And I think you could make a rational argument that over the last 10 years, we have spent a bunch of money maintaining lights that we would not have spent if they were LED. And so how that washes out, I don't know. But I'm sensitive to further, oh, we're just going to study this some more.
Well, my recollection is that when we brought this to counsel, there was no great desire to just jump in and do it.
There was a commitment to a certain amount of conversion within a specified timeframe.
I'm trying to remember what Counselor Lehane's comments, but I think it was-
Was I there?
You were there. This is the last time that you brought it to counsel.
Yeah, which would have been maybe two years, one and a half, two years ago, and we were planning to. And, you know, part of it is just capacity, capacity of staff to be able to deliver the project. But when you talk about the prior time to that, that is when PGE had this program where they would convert them for you if you went to Option A. And when we looked at that analysis, that did not make sense.
That's right. We had two times at this. One was to do the analysis, we hired a consultant-
Right.
-and it was cost prohibitive.
Right.
And then the second one was to get going on it.
Right.
But I think the technology, everything's moving in that direction anyway, so we're not really going to have a choice.
So how long does the pilot go?
We could have it as long or short as we want.
How long until convinces you one way or the other about the validity of the-
I'd say at least a couple of months.
Okay, not years.
I think you'll want to get public feedback on the lights.
Well, we talked about that in these prior things and reached a decision, which seems to have just not then been carried forward, so.
I can work on a rollout plan.
We talked about the lumens, we talked about the wavelength of the light, we talked about all of that stuff, so.
I think we have the standards, so it's just a matter of-
Counselor West?
You mentioned that as they burn out or we replace them to slowly implement LED, but it sounds like it would look significantly different than what already happens, and then you would have a hodgepodge quilt work of LED versus what we already have, like even maybe the way the light tone is maybe different, or even having no glass would be kind of this like, I know invisible, I wouldn't want to have one that like, just like, not matching, like that would, I don't think that that is indicative to kind of like our mode of operation as a city, as our aesthetic appeal that people work so hard towards. I'd be sensitive to, that would make me pause to see it done that way.
So we can, we don't have to. I mean, for some of them, we can keep, as long as they are still producing the high-pressure sodiums, we can go there. I see it more problematic potentially with some of the decorative, like the Westbrook's. I don't think anybody would notice the difference between the two, because we did specifically pick a light color that is more, is comparable to the lights that we have. Will it be exact match? No. But then if you look around, with high-pressure sodiums, they don't all match each other either. It'll depend on their age.
What are we doing in new subdivisions?
In new, so, starting with Frog Pond, for both Frog Pond Developments, they are getting LEDs. Yeah, they're Westbrook, they chose Westbrook LEDs, so.
So we are beginning implementation.
But I hear what you're saying, so that might be something that we consciously in the neighborhood where there's acorns or Town and Country, that we don't do that until we convert over, or we can no longer get high-pressure sodium lights.
It is a different kind of lighting.
Mm-hmm, more blue.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Takes some adjustment.
So if we're relamping every five years, it seems to me we reach a point where the majority of lamps in a given series are going to need to be redone, and it seems to me that would be a point at which to say, well, maybe we're ready to go on this string-
Right.
-instead of, you know, doing one or not doing one. I mean-
And we're checking with PGE where we are in the cycle.
We do need an implementation strategy specifically for retrofitting older areas.
Yeah, and that's what I thought we had two years ago, and now-
We did, but it was cost prohibitive.
Counsel had said go on it. It wasn't cost prohibitive at that point.
That wasn't my recollection, Mayor. I think we'll have to bring that up.
You'll have to take a look at it.
Why is color an issue?
Why is color an issue? Just people's reaction to the color for one. The other one is-
LED's come in many colors.
Right, right.
We don't have to have blue LEDs.
No, we picked a 42-
It's 3,000 Kelvin.
30,000 Kelvin, okay.
Yeah, which tends more towards the amber.
But you could have one like white tone, that's like a one white, that's LED, and then the older next to the lamp of the sodium one, and then the one looks more yellow, and it just glares, and they're both-
Right.
Like it's kind of a different baseline, is what I was visualizing.
Yeah.
Well, because habitat things usually want no more than 3,000.
Correct, yes, because they get confused thinking it's the moon.
Yep, yep. So it's generally between 2,700 and 3,000 Kelvins that they recommend for outdoor lighting for habitat reasons.
Well, it seems to me we need to reconstruct exactly what was done last time, and we need to have from staff a plan saying, okay, here's where we are, here's what the new is, here's And we need to have from staff a plan saying, okay, here's where we are, here's what the new is, here's what we had, here's what council had instructed we should do. And, and we need to clarify what the strategy is going forward, don't we?
My recollection was that we're in no hurry to rush into this because technology changes. But I'm going to have her pull, I'm going to have her pull the report and the transcript from that last discussion.
Okay.
Because we did have, we did have a lot of data from the consultant that we hired in terms of the costs.
Right.
And I would continue to say, if we're waiting on the technology to stop changing, I don't think we're ever going to.
So, so, but, but.
We're already starting to implement LEDs in the neighborhoods.
Or Mayor, I, I have to say, part of it is just the capacity of staff to be able to deliver projects. I mean, in the context.
That's true, but, but somewhat time in the last 10 years, I'd like to see this rise further up.
We won't need to get into the capacity. It's, to me, it was more of a cost factor and a, do we want to be leading the curve on this? Or do we want to wait and see how some other cities implement this and learn from some of the mistakes that they've made?
And I have to say, I'm thrilled with the fact that PGE had, and they've been working on it the last several years, has come to the conclusion that there's many agencies that don't, or we're kind of paralyzed waiting for them to do something because we don't want to be in the lighting business. The city, we don't, that really isn't our core job.
We don't have the equipment or personnel to do that stuff, so. We'll, we'll bring back the information. We're already starting to implement in new subdivisions, so we are moving in that direction. We just haven't gone in and just jumped in.
Right.
And part of the reason not, to, you know, at least let things stabilize a little bit is, is the, how long they last.
Right.
You know, so I was concerned about, a few years ago, about going into the too blue side, too, too high, uh, high a Kelvin because they were not readily available in these other tones, in the more amber tones. And, and you don't want to commit yourself on a light that's going to last 15 years and then, and then say, but I really don't like the color. So that's not a good reason. I mean, that's not a very economical reason to change out a perfectly good light. So.
And that's true. There's some agencies that, that went with the 4,000 and now they will have the 4,000 until those wear out.
Yeah, for a long, long time. And they're pretty, they're pretty obnoxious looking.
Right.
We don't want that.
I guess they become more affordable over time. I mean, it's now it's not new technology and so that's a benefit.
Yeah.
All right, so, sounds good. Thank you for the report and we'll look forward to some more. Getting a little late here, but revisions to Chapter 11 is next up.
Thank you, Mayor Knapp and Counsel. I'm Amanda Guille Hinman, Assistant City Attorney. And I have with me Kathy Roddicker, the Finance Director, and Patty Nelson, our, um, and City Engineer. Almost got you, the Engineering Manager. There's too many of those. So what we're here tonight to discuss is proposed changes to the Wilsonville Code, Chapter 11. This is our, it's entitled the Fee Section. It covers several different types of fees, but the bulk of the chapter is devoted to system development charges and how we administer them here at the city. So in 2018, the League of Oregon Cities updated and published a new SDC model code, which prompted staff to go back and look at our Chapter 11, particularly the SDC section, but found in that review that the other sections in Chapter 11 were pretty outdated, which makes sense because Chapter 11 has not been amended since 1994 in any capacity. So it was good for a review. Staff also undertook reviewing other cities' SDC codes. So we looked at Tualton, Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Westland, Sherwood, Portland, Tigard, among other cities. Since Chapter 11 hadn't been amended since 1994, we did a total rewrite of the chapter. So I see you guys have some red lines, but it's probably all red lined because everything's changed, basically. There's, most of the provisions in the SDC section in particular, there's some tied back in at least, you know, kind of maybe the structure or something like that to how it is now, but it's essentially all redone. In this process, Community Development Department's been involved, particularly the Building and Engineering Departments. Legal and Finance have all been involved in the review. So I'm going to just go over some key provisions to the SDC section and then I'll go over some of the housekeeping matters that we also covered. So the first thing was when SDCs are calculated, there wasn't, this wasn't expressly spelled out in the code. So we just wanted to make it clear that for building permits or when a building permit will be issued, that rates are going to get locked in or vested when the building permit application is deemed complete by the city staff. So that way, somebody can't just turn in an application, you know, turn in a piece of paper with no supporting documentation and lock in a rate. They would actually have to have all the, the documents that are required for that building permit application to then lock in that rate. For anything else, the rates are locked in when the SDCs are collected. So SDCs are collected at the issuance of any, of any of those permits that are listed in the chapter. So building permits, other types of development or connection permits, or a right-of-way permit if SDCs would be required, or if there's an increased impact due to new or changed use. So if you take like Black Bear Diner, for example, that replaced a Denny's, there was no change in the building. There wasn't any new bathrooms added. It's the same, it's a restaurant. It was a restaurant, so no SDCs there. But let's say you have a warehouse that then becomes manufacturing and all of a sudden, you're going to have a lot more traffic and that changed use, that new use adds more impact to our street infrastructure. There may be additional SDCs required due to that change. For ADUs, this is not expressly spelled out in our code, but the city has adopted a policy of waiving SDCs for ADUs. So we just included that in the code to be consistent with our current city policy. The final item is that we, staff have proposed removing the ability to defer SDC payments or to pay SDCs in installments. There's several reasons that staff has proposed this, which are outlined in the staff report. But essentially, what we're trying to get at is not using the city as a bank for people and making sure that viable businesses and developments are coming in. And one of those ways is that they can actually pay the fees that are associated with construction in the city. Then, and actually, the biggest work that was done was in our SDC credit policy. So right now, basically what Chapter 11 says is you're entitled to credits, but it doesn't really lay out how that happens and that can lead to some confusion. So we really got detailed with how the credit policy works. So what would happen is if a developer is going to be building a qualified public improvement, which is a defined term, both in the statutes and in our code, they would fill out an SDC credit application where they're saying, we want to receive a credit for this qualified public improvement that we're going to be building. The city will review that and approve that as part of the development application. Upon completion of that improvement, the developer then submits documentation of the costs that are associated with the qualified, building that qualified public improvement. The city verifies that and then issues a certificate for how much SDC credit they're entitled to, the developers entitled to redeem. So then every time the builder comes in or the developer comes in and it wants a building permit, they hand that certificate at the counter and that money gets taken off of what would be charged for the SDCs as part of the building permit. So we've modeled this after a couple of other cities. The cities that went really detailed were, that I looked at were Westland and Bend. I thought they provide a really good example. So that's kind of where we got the, how we modeled our language. We do allow for transfers of SDC credits. Cities are split on whether they allow them or don't allow them. So what we did is we're allowing a credit subject to a 25% reduction. And you can only transfer cred, like a street SDC credit can, that, you can only transfer that for, to use on other street SDCs. You know, you can't use that for sewer or water, something like that.
So, can I interrupt real quick? So did this information or these code changes come from the LOC? Suggestions, recommendations, or?
It's, it's a mishmash. Yeah, so what we did is we started with the LOC model and then revised it as to tailor it to the way we wanted it to be. So it was sort of our base starting point. And then we modified it based on how we saw other cities, the other cities that we pulled from that we liked how they were doing it. So the LOC model code is not as detailed as we got in this, just because we, we feel and the experience that staff has in trying to administer SDC credits is, can be pretty convoluted and very difficult to track. So we were trying to come up with an easier way, a clearer way to understand how we're tracking SDC credits for builders.
Okay, I have two more questions.
Okay.
On this topic, though. So, um, let's say that a developer or builder does a modification, puts something in, and then after the fact, doesn't apply for a credit. And then after the fact says, hey, this really benefited the city. You know, and I spent $50,000 on it. Can they retroactively come back and point that out to the city?
I'd have to, well, the way that we've worded it now is that they would have to do the credit application and it would have to be approved as part of their development application. So if they, so the way it's drafted right now.
They'd have to see it ahead of time.
They'd have, right. So we can tweak the language if that's what the council would like to see for the ability to come back in. But one of the things that we have stressed is shorter timelines for turning in documentation because one of the things that we do find for some reason is that developers don't ask for SDC credits or reimbursements until much later, which is interesting because the city is essentially holding on to money that they're entitled to.
Right.
So we're trying to shorten timeframes. So at the very least, if we were going to allow that, I would say it would have to be a pretty quick turnaround of that realization.
Okay, okay. And one last question. And it has to do with the transfer.
Yeah.
Say a home builder, a, a building builder is just probably only going to do one project in this city.
Yep.
Going to come back and come back. So they would, and then they have a credit coming back or they, they can transfer that to someone else?
Correct.
To someone else, okay.
That's the way we drafted it.
They can, okay.
Yeah.
That would be.
So there's really two options, which is going to get to the final point here, that, in that case, is they can either transfer it, subject to the 25% reduction.
Okay.
Or the city, we have included sort of an exception where the city can decide in its sole discretion to you, to issue a refund check rather than using credits. And the reason that we've included this exception, which we don't want it to swallow the rule for credits. We really want to use credits. But let's say you have, like we were just talking about with Cisco doing an expansion. I mean, when's the next time Cisco's going to do another expansion?
Right.
But we might have, we have some road improvements that we'd be interested in Cisco doing. And so that might be a place where we say, a check is a better option than giving them credit because
They'll never.
They're not going, they're not going to probably use that credit in 10 years.
And who could they give it, transfer it to?
Right. Now, they may say the 25% reduction, you know, we're getting back 75% of that by being able to sell it off to somebody is worth, you know, they're willing to eat that cost.
Right.
So we're really, we're keeping that in as an option, but we really are trying to be judicious in how we use that and not, you know, if, if somebody's a home builder and they're building 100 homes, that, they shouldn't be getting a refund check.
They should know what they're doing.
Yeah.
Ahead of time. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the?
I do, but I know if I want to do them after on these or later.
Yeah, can you wrap up so we can, then we'll come back?
I've only got a couple more slides. So, yep, we can come back to it. So just the other housekeeping items, we renumbered the sections and put the SDCs section first because it is the bulk of the chapter. We deleted the outdated sections that we really don't use here at the city or, and also other outdated provisions within sections that just don't apply. And then we also added some clarification. So for example, in the city lean section, we just updated it to what our current practice is because it was not reflective of our current practice. So the next steps is we currently have scheduled, tentatively scheduled, a public hearing for May 6th and then the second reading on May 20th. And then the effective date, we're actually going to push out to July 1st. So it starts with our next fiscal year. And this is a way to make sure that council has enough time to review the code changes, give us any feedback before taking it to the public hearing. And then making sure that the staff is all geared up for the changes in the process starting July 1st. So with that, I'm happy to answer, we are happy to answer any questions.
I do have the letter from the home builders that I will pass out.
Okay.
Will I help you with that?
Thank you.
Counselor West, did you have questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Open this back up. The first question they have is, it says the applicant can also transfer the, in the credit with 25%. So just maybe clarification around that. 25% seems like a lot. So my question was, why would we charge a fee to transfer SDC credit if the credit, why can't they just do what they want? If it's kind of their, their funds, what, what's the, and why, why, why the 25% specifically? And then you already answered kind of the refund. It's kind of, you've kind of already touched on that and I think I'm happy with that answer. But more like, where do we get the 25%? And seems more like a pretty big, like maybe a penalty a little bit? It seems kind of hefty and I, maybe there's some stuff, I don't know why the reasoning around that was.
Yeah, so that was probably the biggest debate internally, staff-wise, was the credit and transfer and whether to allow a transfer at all. I would say of the cities that I reviewed, more leaned towards no transfer at all. And we felt like that was pretty prohibitive. Other cities allow 100% transfer, no penalty or, or fee. And 25% was more a compromise. We, we went from 50% up, you know, 50%, 25%, no, you know, no. So I wouldn't say there's like a rhyme or reason why we landed on 25 other than it being a compromise. And there is some administrative burden to the staff to track the change. I mean, I'm not equating that to 25%, but there is some staff work that has to be done in association with that transfer occurring. And, you know, generally, I think that we'd like to see developers continue to develop in the city. So it also incentivizes people to continue to do development within a 10-year time period in the city.
Why, if it's their money, why not just let them use it and transfer it back to another project? Why even take any of it? Maybe have a flat fee for costs for administration, but that 25% can be, that's a chunk. That can be a lot of money. So I don't, I'm kind of, maybe I'm missing how things work, but.
It's not really a cash situation.
Yeah, and, and I may have misheard you, but, but they can transfer, as long as they're doing other projects here, they, it's a 100% transferable.
Okay.
It's only for those that.
It's, it's 100% transferable as long as it's the same developer.
Yeah, so it's like.
So if like Polygon builds in Villebois and gets credits, they can, and Polygon then builds in Frog Pond, they, Polygon could use that. But let's say Polygon wants to transfer to West Hills, that's when a 25% reduction would occur. Yeah.
When, when do you see that? Is that common to transfer to a competitor or to another business? Your SDC, since you can't get a refund, you're just being nice and giving it to them or?
Well, I'm, what would happen is in the private, in, within the private parties, they pay for, they would pay some amount for it, is generally what you see.
Yeah, the reason that mostly, mostly the transfers happen is a developer can't use them in a city view because they're not doing anything else there. And so another developer will come along and, and buy them.
Like a secondary market for SDCs in a way.
Yeah, it is. That's a good way to put it. And, and like Amanda said, many cities don't allow any transfer, which seems a little bit tough.
Why not allow those people to just invest, recoup all their, their costs back if they can do it on a secondary market? Why do we need, what, how does it impact us?
But it's with developers not paying the SDCs, right?
What do you mean the developers?
Are you talking about for oversizing?
Right. Well. Yeah, we're crediting them. Yeah. So essentially, the city's not getting money in and it's not paying money out. So it's not like it's collecting the SDCs and then writing a check. It's.
Well, we've already collected them, right? That's why they're getting a, they almost overpaid them, I correct?
We haven't collected the SDCs.
Well, so yeah, so let me go back. So the credit occurs when a developer builds a qualified public improvement that is larger, a larger impact than what their own development causes. So, you know, for example, if a development only needs an eight-inch sewer pipe, but we're asking for a larger pipe, they get a credit for the larger portion. So they still pay the cost, they would pay the ST, the costs associated with that eight-inch pipe. But let's say they get $200,000 for the larger.
But there's no, there's no money, there's no SDCs involved. If they're required to put in an eight-inch pipe and that's all we need, then they're just have to pay for it.
Right.
If we say we need a 12-inch pipe to serve development upstream, that's the oversizing.
I got you.
They're paying for that. There's no money changing hands here.
Right.
It's an oversizing of a.
Yeah. So then they would come in and say, okay, here's our costs. And then we do the evaluation of, okay, here's how much the eight-inch is. You know, you don't get a credit for that, but here's how much the extra was. And so here's your certificate on sewer SDCs. So when you need to come in and pay, now, when you do need to come in and pay your, your SDCs. SDCs, you don't have to of that portion.
Do you feel like that 25% compared to other cities is generous? Because you said Ben does 100. Do you feel like that it's attractive to these, to be able to, you know, we just, we just really ratcheted up these SDCs to be as-
Yeah, I mean, right, so-
Olive branchy as possible as night, right?
Yeah, so, so the way, when we looked in our, in the surrounding area, Tualatin, Westland, Sherwood, Lake Oswego, Newburgh, Oregon City, all do not allow a transfer. The only cities near us that do are Tiger and Portland on some of their SDCs, not all their SDCs. So, and Ben does allow a transfer as well. So I would say that the 25% looks a lot more desirable than our, our surrounding cities because they don't allow any. Yeah.
And, and then I, do I still get asked my thrones? Make sure everybody's getting a chance, I guess. And then I have here also in, in an installment and deferral, it says that we basically used to allow people to use an installment agreement, and I understand the reason why we're somewhat adverse to that, that makes sense. I was just curious also to how common it was that people would be, were using these, and did those businesses find benefit to that? And often was this a program that would, would really help a smaller business or somebody just coming into the business world to get off the ground and to have it be a little bit more manageable? Or did we find problems where this was a nightmare for the city and it, our good intentions did not end up being, did not working out for us? I'm just kind of getting some background and-
No, that's, that's a good question.
The pros and the cons of that.
It's a lot of policy issues at play with the-
Yep.
Bancrofting is what I think we're talking about, yes. If you allow, how long does it for, 10 years?
10 years, yeah.
So you're, you're basically-
We've had two utility customers since I've been here where we helped them through Bancrofting. One, their septic system failed, so they hooked up to the sewer, and another one, their well hooked up. And that, that worked well. We, we charted here every month on their utility bills. I think where it gets a little more murkier is when it's a larger, I think we've done them a couple of different times and have had some issues with the bigger construction.
Yeah, so one of the issues that we've seen is when larger businesses come in and essentially use the city as the bank. So Subaru, you know, we deferred $1 million of SDCs for them and, you know, it's not turned out great.
I hear you.
What's your, what's your quote?
No good deed goes unpunished.
But you know, if we look at like the Lutheran church, that was just, I mean, they almost potentially got caught in a giant, in what they felt like was a SDC, and maybe that someone at church like wanting to sign on, being able to have that option to be able to work with them, or that mom and pop business that's getting off the ground. I mean, it's a little bit of a catch-22 about making sure we're not just available to the big builders, which we always are talking about, but there's that, that guy that put a mortgage on this house and is opening up a Qdoba, you know, where they're putting up, you know, and they're like, and they're trying to do that little American dream and maybe just, or SDCs are expensive.
Yeah.
What's the interest rate?
Typically, we use the LGIP rate at the time plus a 0.5% increase for administration.
So it's a pretty low rate, so it's kind of attractive.
It is pretty low rate.
And that's, that's one of the issues, is if we're going to do it, the interest rate probably should be looked at because it's so low-
Right.
That it's an incentive, although it's surprising how many, a few people do, but it's way, way less money than a bank would charge, and it's also way less money than we have to pay when we bond.
And then the other problem with deferring all those payments is that you don't have the money to do the projects upfront. That's the main policy concern that I have.
And then you're borrowing money at a higher rate in order to do this.
Like, yeah, I mean, when, when we see construction costs go up 8% and we're charging two and a half, I don't know, yeah, two and a half percent or something.
Is it that high?
No.
Yeah, it's 2.5 right now, so.
But yeah, it was much lower when Subaru borrowed.
Yeah, but, and, and I think the hard part for staff too, if we really wanted to try and hone in on smaller businesses, one, we don't, I didn't, couldn't find any examples of that, but two, is kind of finding that cut, that sweet cutoff point of, of either, you know, the, how much SDCs are you deferring, or what, how do you identify the mom and pop versus the bigger corporations? So for example, what Subaru, you know, what most corporations do, like Subaru, is they form their own LLC for that development, or they use just a development company. So if you look at that development company's books to figure out how much money it has, it doesn't have any money. So it would count as a small business potentially.
It's backed by multi-billion dollar, yeah, publicly traded company.
Yeah, so it's really, so it's hard to draft code that gets at exactly what you're saying of, we, we might want to help small businesses, but we don't want to make, we want to make sure that we're not just a bank for large companies that can otherwise finance their-
I think the bigger concern is the cost of money.
I hear that. I, it's, it's, I just want to make sure that we're being accessible to the average jail out there that may need, or the church or the, that needs to tie into us and that we're being sensitive to that. I, I hear you on the Subaru thing, 110%, like I get that, and that's unfortunate, and I, and, and I don't know if we have a lot of those examples of who's really using it beyond like Subaru, but I don't know, that's why I bring it up. I think that's a perspective to keep. Do other cities have this type of program where they do an installment? Is this unique to Wilsonville again, or?
Oh-
No, statute allows it. We've just decided-
Yes, the statute allows it. Some cities do allow installment payments, yeah. Yeah, it's in their codes.
We are not recommending it.
Other questions? Counselor Ackerman?
I have kind of just a small, quick question, maybe a point of clarification, not, not so philosophical, but in 11.030, the system development charge established, section one, oh, second sentence to the end of that paragraph, it's talking about cost changes would be based upon Pacific Northwest Construction Cost Changes Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, ENR Index, as represented by the City of Seattle, Washington. And I know there's many indexes for everything in the world, and I don't know if like this is the index. I was surprised that it was City of Seattle. I didn't, I thought, huh, is there anything like closer to home, or is that the one? I just didn't know.
That's the west coast one.
That's the one, okay.
It's better than the San Francisco one.
Yeah, and-
Yeah, it just seemed like Seattle was like far off from us, so that's why I wondered.
Yeah, and we did add that the very last sentence because we did want to create, we did want to leave the flexibility for another index to be used. If it's adopted in the resolution, that adopts the methodology.
Okay.
So default is the ENR, but if that doesn't seem to be conducive to the type of SDC, then the council can use another index-
Okay, okay.
In the resolution.
I was just curious about that, yeah.
Other questions? I've got some questions. I think I'm probably the only person sitting here that has used Bancrofting to pay my obligation to the city. At a time when I was first starting my old town commercial property, I had an $80,000 bill for the city, and I didn't have a way to come up with 80 grand. And I suspect Mr. West's comments are exactly on. When you're looking at multimillion-dollar corporations, okay, but if you want to prohibit development in Wilsonville by anybody but multimillion-dollar corporations, this will effectively do it. I think it's problematic. I think small businesses and small development in the community is an asset. The diversity, the people that come to the table that would not be here otherwise, I don't want to preclude that. So I think a blanket rule that says we're just not going to allow it is killing everything for the sake of, of, you know, getting the, the big elephant or something like that. I'm not sure that this is the right way to approach it. I think it might be possible, I think it likely is possible, to define some set of conditions or qualifiers in which you would evaluate objectively whether a certain situation merited allowing payment over time of SDCs. As I hear staff telling it, it's infrequent. It should not be a huge burden. It doesn't happen that much. Now, we may have had a bad experience with a large development, and we need to figure out how to avoid doing that. So my questions go to how, what was the decision track on which it was decided to extend the time payments to this large developer? Because it wasn't council. It was somewhere in staff's handling of that, that that decision was made. And I suspect we did not have clear and objective guidance on which that decision should be made. So I think it would be far better to have objective criteria than to have a subjective discussion about, well, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. It's true that there are relatively few small developments in town. To me, that raises the red flag that says we ought to be ultra-careful that we don't throw unnecessary obstacles in the way of somebody that might want to bring a development to the table within our community that we would see as desirable and an asset over time in the community. And I, I assume that is probably not going to be frequent. It's just the way that costs are and the difficulties are, it doesn't happen. We used to have a lot of small residential developers that would build one house or two houses or three houses. And the market has gotten more and more difficult for people in that scenario too. But I don't think we ought to structure our rules to say that doesn't matter that, you know, develop, developers are big fish and they can come up with money somewhere. If we need to charge a more competitive interest rate, we can write the rules, so we do it that way. If you want to have qualifiers that say, you know, in these circumstances, we would consider it, so write the qualifiers that, that, that accomplish that. I don't think just saying, hey, we're never going to do this, answers the problem, in my view. So that's my spiel, and I would be happy to talk specifics. I don't know if I need to do it now for all the other things. I guess I will ask another couple of questions. What am I in here? I'm in the staff report. Paragraph, item number one, when SDCs are calculated, they're saying when it is deemed complete by the city. After I turn in a development application, how long does the city have to deem me complete or deem me incomplete? Might it be two weeks later or three weeks later that I hear back from the city, oh, you're not complete, sorry? How does that, what, what controls that?
That, that would be a question for the building-
That's a practical-
Department, but I will, I, I will ask.
Aspect question of how this works.
I, I believe, I believe there is a timeframe, I just don't know what the timeframe is.
For the building permit?
No, well, for the building department to determine whether or not is-
Yes.
It's-
I don't know what it is, but there is a requirement that they have so many days to go, yeah.
All right. Paragraph two, SDCs do an payable. Include the ability of staff to assess SDCs if there is a change of use. And the example was given was when a warehouse was changed to a manufacturing facility. Okay? What about when a 400-square-foot extension on a building that has been used for storage is converted to a commercial use to join the area adjacent to it? I mean, what is the scale of the impact in which you're saying this is how it'll work?
Are you applying for a building permit? Because that would determine the scale.
Yeah, the, so right now, if you do any type of modification, you know, modifications to your building or you're adding to your building and you would need to get a building permit, that analysis is already done now. That's the current system.
Change of use would be handled at, at the time the permit is examined.
Yeah. So if you're adding more impervious space, you would, you would pay more stormwater-
Or if you're intensifying the use, then that-
Yeah, well, so the question is, so for another 400 square feet, you're going to make me do a traffic analysis? Go out and spend four or five grand to do a traffic?
So there's a difference between-
So it's not clear to me within the wording-
There's a difference between a building permit and a land use application, Mayor. So if, if you had to submit a land use application, then that, the criteria for that land use application would be predicated by the planning department. If you're coming in to get a building permit to do something to a shed, that's, I think is what I heard you say in your example, then that has its own set of standards, and it may or may not trigger a planning permit as well. It depends on what you're doing in that building.
Okay, this says, staff propose to further clarify the types of permits that may require the payment of SDCs beyond a building permit.
Which would get into the land use issue, right?
Right.
That's not the way I read that sentence.
So for example, if you need to, if you have a septic system and you're going to, and you're, I think the rule is if you're within 300 feet of city infrastructure and you're going to replace your septic system, you actually have to hook up to, to the city.
That's a DEQ requirement.
That's a DEQ requirement. So at that point in time, you would have to pay SDCs for that. You're not getting necessarily, I don't think that qualifies as a building permit. If I, I believe that's a connection permit.
Well, they have to pay-
Are you sure? You have to pay a connection fee, but you have to pay SDCs also?
So the building, there may not be-
When you're already in the city?
Yeah, because you're not attached to the city's infrastructure.
So this is like for-
I don't think so.
So for a person who's out in Frog Pond, who's not necessarily incorporated into the city, but let's say there's a city road that's within 300 feet that has sewer, they would-
Think about, it's a new connection.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but-
So it's a larger impact on the system.
But the city, I, I don't think that's the way it has worked historically because of course the city-
Has since I've been here, if not before, I mean, hasn't changed.
The city has expanded multiple times and swallowed up houses that remain on wells and remain on septic for some period of time.
And until they connect to the city's system, they don't have to pay any fees. They're grandfathered in, but-
No, but, I mean, I, because I, I connected our house, I've connected two houses. And my house, we paid sewer connection fee. It was $1,500 or something, but for our house back in 1990.
Well, things have gotten more expensive.
Well, but it wasn't SDCs, is what I'm saying, because when we moved the little house, we paid SDCs of $25,000, plus we played, paid a sewer connection fee. So, so those are two different things.
Right, I can't speak to what was in place in 1990.
But I, but it seems to me if you have, if we, you mean, if we have a house in Old Town that's on a septic and they, and they decide to hook up, they have to pay more than, than a sewer hookup fee?
They have to pay an SDC.
They have to pay an SDC also?
Because it's a new connection to the system, it's adding capacity, it's taking away capacity, so they have to pay an SDC. It's, which would be cheaper than rebuilding a septic system. So for cost to cost, it's not going to be as expensive as rebuilding a septic. Plus it's more rental service.
Well, I mean, I mean, because when the city was first incorporated, of course, every single house here had no service, had its own service. And over time, all those old houses have, have come online. But my understanding with, over the years with the old, old houses, is that they paid a sewer connection fee, and of course, they paid for the construction of, and the work to, to get the sewer, the house hooked up, but, but it must be a fairly recent thing that they also pay SDCs on top of the construction and-
Yeah, it's pretty common.
So could we get a census of scale of that price, you know, for houses that are connecting?
For a sewer SDC?
Yeah.
Do you have, for a single-family residential?
All right, so that would help me understand whether it's relatively inconsequential or whether it is a major hurdle.
The code changes that we're making don't change how we're business-
That's, that's, that policy is in place, it's not changing unless you want to make it free.
Well, as long as we're changing stuff, we may not want to see what it is.
The water would be the $9,600 that was just passed.
We know that one, because we just increased it.
We just did that one.
Zach, do you know what a SDC is for a sewer, for a single-family?
We can find that out, but again, this isn't, this isn't the ordinance you would do that in. It would be a different ordinance. This is just the procedures, but we can certainly look at the phase.
I certainly understand of new construction has always had SDCs, but old buildings...
Still not connected to the city system, so it's...
I understand, you've said that four times now. I understand the rationale.
That's why the policy's there.
I'm just saying, I don't think it has always been that way.
But it may not have been, but it has been, I think, for at least the last 10 years.
So I don't know when it would have changed, post-1990.
We should be able to figure that out.
All right, so it sounds like there are several things to discuss. I don't know if I need to have more discussion with staff or what. I would like to see an alternative brought back that talked about maintaining some program for the, the deferral of payments under some circumstances that could be defined. Do you need more specific?
I think what we would, what we can talk offline about is the, what objective criteria would be to, to figure out who would qualify for that. But yes, we can come back with an alternative. And I might advocate for not allowing for deferments, but allowing for just installments if we're going to do, if we're going to allow for something, don't allow for a deferment where somebody can completely construct a building and not pay a dime.
So I would need to hear those arguments or those rationales and what the alternatives would be.
You probably want to look at interest rates as well.
Yeah, we'll look at interest rates.
So that we're not losing money on them.
Shouldn't lose money on it, agree. You know, or make it so attractive that, you know, you become the bank, you know.
Well, and we'll be talking tonight about a situation where we need to bond, because we need, we don't have all the money we need for a project and what our interest rate is there, not to mention significant financing costs, so that's the other side of it.
So we have to figure out about how that works, because that's always changing.
Right, but we can certainly find out, see what instances we can track down where this provision was used and who used it, and, and come back with some alternatives for you to look at.
Okay, Councilor West?
Just a quick glance, because we've just seen this for the first time, this email from HBA or this, this document, is can we also maybe see what it would look like to have some type of version where if this affects housing costs and this is a workable way to collect SDCs, I don't know if that would be an appropriate thing to have a good look at policy-wise too? Or are you guys thinking about that?
Yeah, this again is just the methodology, that would really be something you would look at in terms of the various SDCs. And there is a house bill pending now that does do some of that relief, but for, for the middle housing, not for all housing.
But I think the due and payable aspect is covered in this, right?
Yeah, it is.
And that's one of the things that they're asking for, so I think you'll want to look at that.
Be interesting to see what that would be like.
And that's, that's the way we've been doing it, we've never done it this way.
Could we have a staff analysis of the effects of what they're asking? So that we can have that back to work with?
You can absolutely do that.
Yes, that's what I was going to recommend, Mayor.
Good, I think that would be helpful.
Perfect.
All right. Okay, other questions?
And again, this is, we tried to do this a little bit early, so we'll have another work session.
Lots of time to discuss.
And everybody will have time, and we're always available for calls from any one of you to sit down and talk about any provision you have concern with.
Well, so let me just try and recap this, I understand that there's a concern about, do we want to charge existing homes in the city a connection, or an SDC fee? I would assume that you would apply that to all SDCs, right?
Well, how would you do that for parks' SDCs?
No, 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 we wouldn't be able for parks, but for sewer and water.
Yeah, it's sewer and water.
Where you got to hook up.
Where you see connections.
Right.
That would probably be the only one.
You can't, you're not going to do stormwater, you're not going to do parks.
No, they would be paying stormwater fees.
The house that was built in 1930, they've been using the parks all the time, they've been using the stormwater all the time.
Well, and the increased impact is only on those systems, so you're only going to charge for the increased impact on those systems, not on parks.
So in the case of the sewer, it'd only be the sewer?
Right.
You wouldn't pay SDCs for every, for all SDCs.
All the SDCs, yeah.
Okay.
So that one. And then some kind of clear and objective criteria as to how you would apply bankrupting.
Yeah.
And then we will also look at, we'll ask the building department about the deemed complete question.
And we'll take the home builder's letter and see what we can do in terms of analysis.
Yep.
That would all be helpful to me.
Is that everything?
Anything else that we would like to see? I think that captures most of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can give you an update on plastic bags if you want them.
Okay.
Mr. Leo handed me a note. HB 2509 prohibits use of single-use checkout bags. House Committee on Energy and Environment, hearing held 219, work session scheduled 328. Prognosis will likely pass.
Yeah.
Reusable bags only. Applies to plastic and paper, provides for a 10-cent charge for recycled paper. So it looks like it's moving through.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Do we do it? Wow. Oh, yeah. Yeah.